Good evening, everyone. This is on Zoom. Thumbs up if you can hear us. Wonderful. Thank you.
So I want to start by saying good evening to everyone and I'd like to welcome everyone and thank you for joining us this evening. Can you hear me okay on Zoom? Thumbs up, please. Wonderful. In addition to those here in person tonight, this meeting is also being held virtually via Zoom and the recording will be accessible to... Can you hear me? Okay. So, and the recording will be accessible to all residents at their request. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to openly discuss the concerns of Autumn Lakes residents and board. By the end of this meeting, we will have communicated relevant information, shared input for decisions, and hopefully accomplished specific tasks pertaining to this agenda. As a board, we are charged with leading and being non-confrontational. As a new board member, my role is rooted in solutions and the best outcomes for our community. I am eager to serve and intend to be collaborative and effective. I'm a steward leader who is able to facilitate positive action while remaining respectful to our neighbors and friends. We are all here because we share a vested interest in our community. During tonight's meeting, each of us will be respectful. We will state our concerns without any name-calling or finger-pointing. So here are the norms for our time together. Be respectful to your neighbors. Actively listen to each other. One speaker at a time. We'll have microphones up here if you have questions or anything. Refrain from personal attacks. Accept that different opinions are a part of learning. They're a part of our community. Cell phones don't vibrate because we want to be respectful for whomever is speaking at the time. And again, thank you for being here and welcome. So we're going to start. We've already done the introduction. So we're going to start with a presentation from the MINDY and Reconciliation Group. So, Ms. Jares, come on. I've got a microphone here. Yes, please.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks very much for calling. This is a very important meeting to all of us. We are here to fix Autumn Lakes. This is not confrontational. We're not here to name-call, just as Pam said, and that's what we're here for, to help each other. Many of us have been here 40 years, 30 years, 20 years, some are brand-new. And it's very important that we all understand and work together, and that's what this is all about tonight. All right. I have prepared a PowerPoint presentation, which the Zoom people have a copy of. And I just have it basically written out like this. And Christine Milton has a list of the items, if you need a copy of it or you would like a copy of it. It's all available for you here. It's going to cover some of the things that were on the video. It's going to cover some other things. We're trying to make suggestions tonight to try and heal, try to help, try to amend some of the things that's been going on or need to be going on or whatever. So bear with me. We'll take questions at the end. We'll answer them to the best of our ability. There's a lot of things that are unknown at this point in time because of the situation going on, but we're going to try and come together. And all of you are part of this. Every one of you. We want your ideas. We want your suggestions. And the board wants your suggestions. Because it's not a one-road show. It's a two-way, and we all have to work together. And it breaks my heart sometimes to see some of the things, but we're going to make this happen. So, I'm going to start. There's going to be five bullet points, basically, like a PowerPoint. So just bear with me, and then I'll go back and start explaining them. The overview: Why changes needed in Autumn Lakes Board of Directors? Number one, and this is no pointing fingers or any kind of... This is the facts. This is just what we know. Number one, failure to follow the HOA bylaws, restrictions, covenants, rules, regulations, and indentures. That's it. Big binder. I showed it the other day. It's online. It's under more on the Autumn Lakes STL site. You go under more, go down, and it's all right there. You can print it out, read it, please read it. Mr. Mussum started it in 1980 and 81, and it's for our benefit. It's to help us keep together and get together. The Autumn Lakes STL, and you go across the heading, and there's a more word, more. Click the down arrow, and then all of these are down underneath there, okay? If you can't find it, one of us will help you get it. Number two, failure to maintain entire properties for both associations. Remember, there's two associations here that come into one. We have the Autumn Lakes Association, which is the common ground, the pools, the roads, everything. And then we have the Autumn Lakes Condom Meeting Association, which is all listed at Primeless. So those two come together to form one, and that's what this board represents, is one of making it out of two. Number three, failure to introduce certain responsibility by unilaterally hiring SMD and major contractors with vendors without homeowners' in-court approval. We'll get on to that. Number four is breach of contracts. Number five is conflict avoidance by the board president and abuse of power. I'm not finger-pointing. I'm just going to talk about what we know. Failure to follow the rules. This is number one. Hiring SMD and major contractors with vendors without homeowners' in-court approval. We'll get on to that. Number four is breach of contracts. Number five is conflict avoidance by the board president and abuse of power. I'm not finger-pointing. I'm just going to talk about what we know. Failure to follow the rules. This is number one. HOA bylaws, indentures, restrictions, covenants, rules, and regulations, which I just pointed out are online. If you can't download it, some people do it on printers. I've got four copies set out in the car. I'll be glad to give you. These are the rules violated or ignored. Board must grant major changes or expenditures to homeowners, all of you, for approval by majority vote. It's in our rules, regulations, indentures, and bylaws. You need to vote on. For spending $55,000, just an example, on asphalt, we need to know that and we need to vote on it. Do we want to do it now or do we want to delay it for another time? Is there something else that needs to be done? We'll take questions at the end.
Can you do those specify what constitutes as a major expenditure?
Well, next part. Yeah, thank you. Okay, thank you. What we... There's nothing in our bylaws right now, but we are proposing an amendment that anything over $25,000 where a major expense comes back to you... We don't want petty bills, and I don't mean to call petty, but the little stuff. But anything major, like $25,000 or more. The asphalt on the driveway was $55,000. We have the bill. The accident sent it to us. So we do know what that is. I don't know what the top code it was, but that's a major expense. So, all right. Now, that the one that wasn't ignored, you were not given the choice to vote on Smith Management Group. You were not given that choice. It's also in the bylaws that you do. Major consent. This is the $25,000. This is the next one. Anything over $25,000 comes back to you as a vote. So do we want to do roofs? Do we want to do asphalt? Do we want to do siding? You know, those kind of things. Given to you because it's in our bylaws, it's your choice. It's your money. Page four, the rules and regulations. Say, see it, say it, and they are not being acted upon. Page four, rules and regulations. If you download it, you'll see. You are to take anything you see that someone's violating or not doing and take it to the board. The trustees first, then the board, because there's trustees and board. And they're supposed to look at it, act on it, levy people, fine them, take care of them. Very important. Non-uniform application of bylaws and indentures, which I just talked about. Everybody's the same. We're all the same. I don't care. We should all be treated the same, same violations, same levies, same everything. Proposed remedies. Start asking for your approval. Communication. We have a secretary. Madonna's a secretary. Communicate. Email, whatever. Involved interested homeowners and proposed problems and resolutions. We need your help. What do you see out there that we need done? Let's see a list of priorities. You were all out. I saw all of you on the last two days, and many of you seem like all of you were out. Tell us. Tell everybody. What do you see? What do you think needs to be done? What's more important to you over other facts? That's very, very important. Mandatory break-in service for trustees after term serves. No rotation of office positions extended. Sorry to say this. A couple of people have been on the board a very long time, and according to our bylaws, terms and regulations, it's supposed to be three years. You do different positions, rotate off, and then everybody else comes in. We need all of you. We need you. Starting enforcing the bylaws and indentures. That's very great court. That's why you're here. They are recorded at the St. Louis County Courthouse. They're for our benefit. We need to use them. Consider possible revisions of many rules that are considered to be outdated. Now, granted, these were made up in 1980 and 81, but they're very relevant. But there's a couple of things we need to change. We need to modernize. So we can do that. But now it has to be done immediately. Has to be recorded and filed at the St. Louis County Courthouse, just like we did in 2014 when we did the rentals. For those of you that were here, we stopped getting rentals and we put a maximum in over and it was recorded. Failure to maintain Autumn Lakes properties. That's the next one. Not maintenance of properties. Annual rotation of painting of buildings not being done. No touch point, no research being done, and no expansive repairs being done. Serious maintenance on buildings being ignored. No communication with residents about proposed repairs. Or how often have you put a repair in and it hasn't gotten done. Bible old gross hardwoods. This one I told you in the video, it broke my heart about the trees. Removed rather than approved and considered an extensive cost, I think $47,000 was on the books to remove the trees. And we didn't do a one-to-one replacement. That's kind of... That's lost. And so much when we built those, put those beautiful trees for us to enjoy. The lakes. This is another one. Lakes aquatic life managed by core management. We all know what's happened to the lakes. There's no sound. Roundup was thrown down the outside. What a shame. We've had very little managed from 2020 to 2021 to 2022. So why are our operating funds so low? That's a big concern. Where's the money gone? Money wasn't spent on repairs. Where'd it go? Why are our reserves also? So we've got operating funds, and we have a reserve account, and we have a CD-type account. So there's three types of accounts there. They're all very, very, very low. And we need to know where the money's gone, why it wasn't used in here. Here's the remedies. Prioritize the most important needs and expenditures to the homeowners. So you know the work orders that many of you put in. If you don't put them in, we can check on them. Inform the homeowners of the state of affairs, why there's a lack of funds, and the problem with funding maintenance and annual services. We've lost a lot of our contractors in the past, unfortunately. I'd like to know why, because we had some pretty good contractors that were out there maintaining our buildings. Seek creative ways to pay for amenities, upkeeps and repairs, while keeping the enjoyts down as required by our bylaws, indentures, rules, and regulations. Mr. Mussum specifically put in there that our assessments are based upon the CPI. That's the Consumer Price Index. The maximum it can go is 10%. It's based upon what happened last year. Our fees went up more than CPI in the last two years. So look it up. Find it out. This year it's only 3.4%. Last year it was 6.5%, and if you go do the calculations, they went up by 8% almost. That's too much. Now, I know we probably need it, and they have the board increased budget, and they go through this and that, but you still have to follow the guidelines, and it's specific so that it doesn't bankrupt you and yet still puts the money in coffers for our associates. Okay, lakes and aquatic energy next to life. We need to get Missouri Department of Natural Resources involved. We need to get DEP. We need to get ETA involved. We've got to get them back up and running. We've got to get the sound system going again and do whatever we can to bring that back because Autumn Lakes is Autumn Lakes because of Autumn Lakes, not dead symbols. I'm sorry. Kind of spaced down there today if you all walked down by it. And this is all from our bylaws, covenants, restrictions, regulations, indentures. Everything is recorded at the courthouse in a thick book, which we... I think there may be less than this. All right. Failure to fiduciary responsibility. A fiduciary means they work for you. I work for Carol. I work for Lisa. I work for you. That's a fiduciary relationship. This board works for you. You don't work for them. They have fiduciary relationship and responsibility. According to our bylaws, they work for you. So you are to be taken care of by them. That's very important to understand that. Per the bylaws, they hired a property management company, and it's responsible for bringing major changes and expenditures for approval and vote. I don't think we voted on it. Executing major contracts without homeowner input or approval. Asphalt, snow removal, lawn care, treats, anything major. They... I don't think we voted on that. SMD does not properly keep financial records. Significant costs incurred. Contracts and extremely poor customer responsive. I emailed them seven times. I still haven't got a response. I know it was blocked. I asked the financials. I asked to see their real estate license because they're claiming they have a real estate license, which they don't. I don't believe they do, but I can't find it anywhere. But just constant, constant, unblocked all the time. Can't get any information whatsoever. Which is not good. So, all right, here's the remedy. Charter project team to find replacements for SMD. We should form a committee that goes out and vets. They were not vetted. I talked to Laura about this before. They looked at things and looked at recommendations, but they weren't vetted. Vetted goes deep. I mean, we're not talking Facebook. We're not talking their webpage. We're talking down deep. We're talking financials. Who's running? Where they're running it. They're out of Richardson, Texas. They take their checks up in Kansas City, and they're here. Who knows what? That's probably what the fees are like. You get $15,000 fees? Well, it's going from here to here to here to here. You notice when they're posting it? Did anybody look at their coastmarks or check? You know, just... You need to check that. So that's a big concern because there's a lot of expense going out in your pocket and out of ours. So we need to do best practices. We need to recommend to the board and you as a homeowners to find the right people. And, you know, I got to say AMC was always good. I know that there's favoritism. I know all that. But they also kept a pretty tight running ship, but I know a lot of you don't like... I understand that. I know that. But we haven't found anybody else either, and this one's not good either. So hold on a minute, Laura. All right. We need to make a smooth transition. Whoever we get, if we can do an interim team committee with the board to find a new one, we'll have to honor probably their contract until the end of December because it's going to take 90 to 120 days to flip something over to another one anyway. We're talking money, deposits, contracts, the whole thing. So it's going to take time. But all of us together working, we can do that. Many hands make light work, so we need to do that. Now, we need to ask homeowners for preferences. If money is scarce or we don't have enough money in the funds, what do you feel is the most important thing we should be doing? What repair? What should we hold off on? Maybe during the summer, but it's 100 degrees. We don't move for a week or two. Maybe when it gets a half an inch to an inch of snow, we don't have the tides come. You know, that's going to save... We had $40,000, I believe, in lawn care, and we had $47,000 in snow removed this past year. I mean, that's astronomical. So if we could back it back down and maybe forego, you know, we can all help. So if somebody's got to get out, I'd help all my neighbors. Still, windows in the road, shovel up the driveway. You know, that's easy. So, and initiate. This is really important. We need to initiate an independent audit. We need to go back at least three years, if not four. We need to go back to when AMC had it and SMD because there's a lot of funny things that I found in the books. And I'm not an accountant, but there's a lot of funny things. And they are an a la carte company that charges you every... They'll die and pay for everything. It's not across the board. It's everything is charged. That's real clear. Okay, breach of contracts. These are wrong goods. Non-standard prepayment of condo assessments at closing. I found on some HUD sheets. HUD sheets are what you assign when you buy your condo, your house. Last year, we had 14 sales in Autumn Lakes, which is phenomenal, which is great, considering the market stance is crazy. On those subject sheets or HUD sheets, SMD had collected ahead three months of condo assessments. Where is that in our bylaws? Where does that give them the authorization to do that? It has to be signed, filed, and recorded at the courthouse. That is an amendment change. It's nowhere to be found. So I don't think the buyers knew it, but, you know, I saw it, and that's not quite what should be going on. Now, resale certificate. All of you should have gotten when you watch a condo, a resale cert. A resale cert that certainly tells you how many units there are, how many are rented, what your assessment for that unit is, if there's any capital expenditures, if there's any money that's... Or the reserves aren't very good. You're supposed to have a copy of financials and a copy of the condo docs in your possession when you get that resale cert. And it stays on there to be sent to them or to be received. None of the buyers I talked to got it. And also, the resale cert was wrong. They said we had 284 condos. We have 294. They said 14 were rented, and I thought we were lending back to 10, but that might have gotten changed when we had leasing. There was also a lot of noes checked. There were no capital expenses coming up. They said there was... The regivers were fine. They're... I'll have to show it to you. And Mindy, I think her name was, from SMD did... The secretary's supposed to be doing it in some of the condos. So that's... And maybe they assigned that to SMD. I don't know. But normally, the secretary does it because she is the keeper of the information. She's our keeper. She's our communicator. So, all right. All right. These are remedies. Property added. We need to... We have a suggestion that when property settles here... Most HUHs do this. They have a one-time fee. It's called an initiation fee. All buyers pay it when they settle, and it's like $1,000, and it goes in the capital account or reserve account. That way, it starts building up our coffers. That's a one-time fee. It's an initiation fee, and it has nothing to do with their assessments. It's just something that we do. And we need to abide by the rules. Okay, conflicts of interest. We have a few conflicts of interest. We have turned in... We have turned in here at CFS six times. It's turned in to the board, and to Madonna, the secretary, and nothing's been done on any of the here at CFS on page four. There have been many numerous violations, from signs on cars to garbage cans, all kinds of stuff. And it's all been turned in legitimately written, as they requested, and nobody has made any enforcement of the rules, regulations, or bylaws to people that are involved. And that's bad. So we're asking for, together, we discussed everything with you. I have only one minute left. We chartered a team of volunteers and have new committees. We've got all kinds of committees we'd like to suggest. We feel that the board president and vice president should resign. They've been on 20 years and 70 years. We call for community trustees, and we vote them in. We have an interim committee that helps select and educate new people coming on the board. And levy clients that need to be levied, and there's a lot of... And with that going into the coffers of our reserve money, our capital account, that was not filled up, thanks. It will stop the violations, and it will stop this stuff. Now, I'm going to call it stop. I could call it something else. It's going on. But it will stop and bring us all back together because then we're all on the same page, okay? Thank you very much. Thank you. So we're asking for, together, we discussed everything with you. I have only one minute left. We chartered a team of volunteers and have new committees. We've got all kinds of committees we'd like to suggest. We feel that the board president and vice president should resign. They've been on 20 years and 70 years. We call for community trustees, and we vote them in. We have an interim committee that helps select and educate new people coming on the board. And levy clients that need to be levied, and there's a lot of... And with that going into the coffers of our reserve money, our capital account, that was not filled up, thanks. It will stop the violations, and it will stop this stuff. Now, I'm going to call it stop. I could call it something else. It's going on. But it will stop and bring us all back together because then we're all on the same page, okay? Thank you very much. More questions? Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so she's done her presentation. So all of your questions should, right now, be based off of her presentation. And then we will have comments from the board. Laura will have her chance to provide additional comments based off of the presentation and questions asked, okay?
I forgot to ask you where I was going. Do you want to be my main address or does that not happen? You don't... Okay, so I'm a former here on... I live down at 11970 Autumn Lakes. So I actually concerned about what keep addressing about the violation. So remember when they replaced the trash cans? And they said they did not want you to put any trash bags on the side of the trash can or over how the trash can, because it's breeding rodents or it's breeding ground for rodents. So that should be dealt with immediately. I mean, it was clearly stated that that's a violation. So how come that hasn't been addressed?
I don't know that answer. I know that the trash cans are still out at the store set and investments is February 14th that that was addressed. That you're supposed to make sure your trash cans are in either the small ones or the large ones. So you're supposed to have it back in your garage at the end of the day. Laura can probably address that better. I don't...
What I'm saying is they're overflowing. They should not be overflowing. We need to get them down on the trash can. Well, that's what I'm saying. Why is that... I mean, it's really void, but it's not going down. For example, give me a second. Why did you... See, I can't even...
Is it a residence trash can?
Yeah. Are we talking about trash bags that are used to trash bins? Trash bags and the bins overflowing. That's... You know, you can't close the leak. Well, I know that the public prefers that the lids be closed. In which case, you would need to keep someone yourself or I'll break it down better. The trash bags have been addressed. People are getting calls and warnings. I don't think we had to find anybody because they figured out first when they shouldn't do it anymore. But we are picking barrels of stack on that, trying to... It has settled down quite a bit, I guess. It's been like a one-off, like maybe one person, but we have been following up with that and calling people. Okay, we did... At some point, we just... When you go to a meeting, you have to... You say, "What's it?" Your question. You can call the other people. You can also... And what we give you guys, we developed an email for the entire board. It's just autumnlakesboard@gmail.com. So any questions, concerns, that way, it'll go to the entire board. Everybody will see it. Is that all that on the list for... Yes. And gmail.com. Uh huh. Thank you. Yes. Good to go.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Laura. I'm a chicken on short drive. I'm a little confused here. In your presentation, you kept using the word "we." Who was "we"?
Who's association?
Who?
This association.
Wrong part is I'm not "we." I'm not "we." Okay, I'm not sure who you're talking about.
Okay.
The association. Who are you talking about?
Both associations.
Okay.
You... We are made up of two associations.
No, I understand that. I don't... Still, my same concern is that as you addressed us, you kept saying the word "we." Well, are they a board of the "we"?
Yes.
Okay, so are you forming a different group? I was going to ask this to you all. I've never been. I'm trying to figure out what's wrong, okay? It sounds like to me, it sounds like to me, there's another group going on besides the board that we had left. I think that's unfair because if anybody else wants to be up there, like those people, they need to run for election. Doesn't that... Okay, if you want to replace the board, whoever wants to replace the board, maybe you should file and run. I don't see the purpose of having two groups in here.
It's...
Okay, I'll... I'll hear two different groups, okay? I listened to your presentation really clearly, okay? And I started not saying anything at all, but I think it's unfair to the people that we had left. I voted for these people. I'm putting my trust in these people, okay? You have issues in the complex. You should go to them. Give them a chance, okay? A problem comes up, and it's not done in 24 or 28 hours. It's an issue with the board. Well, sometimes it takes a little longer than that, okay? I know that for a fact. I've been running a property management company for years now, okay? So everything that you're picking apart, I'm pretty sure if your group was in there, we could pick that apart too. So I'm just saying, be patient, the group. Just be patient and give these people a chance. If you want to help, help them. You sound like you have a lot of knowledge. If you want to help, help them. You sound like you have a lot of knowledge. Okay, I really don't. So I, I really think with all your knowledge, you can help us. Okay, if you don't, somebody you want to help, you can help us. Okay, so I, I'm just saying, from what I heard, I think it's going like that. And I don't want to be a part of anything. And I love living here, okay? So I, I, I hope you can find some solutions, and it's not always, I still have to attack most people, even though it was, wasn't supposed to be, I still was hearing something like that. I'm only asking us to find a way to fix that because of our time. Thanks.
I agree. The, the purpose of this was that the amendment reconciliation committee group was a group of concerned homeowners, which we all are. Uh, I am equally, I've been here twenty years. Uh, and we were trying to address the issues that we were finding that were not being taken care of, property management, maintenance, fines not being levied, things like that. And we have gone to the board several times through letters, emails, texts, and in person. And we have been shot down every time, because there's been no open, they will not open their minds and listen. Now, they're gonna rebut it, and I know that, but we have attempted, we've tried, we've pointed out, we did it by the book. If you look at page four on rules and regulations, see it say it, I'll be happy to share all my emails. And it's not just mine. We have about three hundred emails and texts messages from all kind, everybody. Not everybody, but several people, and, and do for this, because there's more issues building up. So we've been attempting to, and we are all, like you, we want all of us to come together as we, not them and us. And that's the most important thing. We don't want the homeowners not having the respect from the board members, and we don't want the board members not having the respect from us. And that's very important to understand that, since you're my neighbor, I mean, we're neighbors, so, but anyway, no, it's, we're trying. And, and we've just had block after block after block. And that's why this has all kind of started. And I want to be honest, what started for me is because of basketball that wanted to be replaced, and Mark and I went into
Yeah.
Just several, several stuff that just needs to be done. And so that's, you know, that's, that's why we started, you know, and we're just trying to all of us come together and do this, but when you have someone that won't open and won't listen and won't allow us or blocks us or shuts us out, I was told I was a member and I can talk, she's gonna call the cops on you. You know, it's, it, it's several things like that, but you know, and I'm, and I'm trying to be real honest, but that's what happened. So I want this to be together, and I will be happy to share the knowledge that I've done at property management for thirty years.
There we go.
So I know that.
So we should be on the same page.
Exactly, you and I, we, and we need to.
So, so I appreciate everything you said, I really do. I still, you, you just referred back to that we again. I just don't know the group that you're talking about. See, I, I know you, but you're, you're representing somebody else in here also.
I'm trying to represent all of us.
Well, that's not the truth, dog. Okay, that, that's what I'm feeling in here. So I'm, I'm, I'm gonna end here, okay? I ask people if you can share their knowledge in a positive way.
Absolutely.
With the board that we chose, I think it would work out for all of us. I'm not, I'm not always happy with the services myself, okay? But I don't, I'm not, I mean, I, I know certain things, uh, times are happening, right? And so you can't get upset if you post one person on the board and that person doesn't move fast enough for you. Maybe the whole board is trying to consider something to put their thoughts together. I'm just having a time of it.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
My name is Deborah Harvey, and this is our, I have our first comment. But then about the, um, basketball net. Nobody bothered to know or find out that I'm going to replace them with the broken net twice already and two metal nets this year. So like August sort of four nests.
I would love to speak on that. I wouldn't.
Yeah, you know, just, it, it, it took a hit.
Yeah, but they didn't stop them or fall them.
It was a bit of a using of.
Oh. Okay, well, one of the ramifications was that we, they don't leave them at, they're not professional players. And then they're going to be hanging on, and they're going to practice as well for the house support, considering.
Good question.
Again, I'm Deborah Harvey, I'm thirty-one ten. And then I come home, I, I take a meeting, and I come home and I have probably built this year more than he cares to hear. So he decided to come and see the confrontation and the problems that are going on in the community. Now, I agree with a lot of the things that she said in regards to things that need to be done. The one thing that I definitely did not like was where Smith Management was all of a sudden Anthony was going to take management, it was misplaced. I did not like that because I did feel like he as, as residents should have had an opportunity to say something. But I also feel like if we are going to be the ones to vote on the snow removal and the, the, the pavement being done, at some time, we're not going to need a board. If we're the ones that's making all, if the whole community is voting on it. We vote on the people and we let them to be our board. And we trust that they are going to do the things that we are wanting done. So for all of us to vote every time something comes along, I don't know about your time, but I, I commend them for wanting to do what they're doing. I had an opportunity to run, I saw a lot of people have, but that's time consuming. So while you sit back and complain, don't complain to be getting involved. I've been on board with whoever did before, and that's time consuming. We can always sit back and criticize and find things that need to be done, but, but are we actually actively doing something? So I, I think that, that, and people, the reason why he feels like it's two groups is because we have been approached, we've been given proxies, we've been told that we're gonna oust the board, and we're gonna bring it in on board, and we're gonna do this. And so I like him. Who is we? And I have to, excuse me, I'm not gonna be a part of anything that operates like that. I'm not gonna be a part of. And I'm not gonna be a part of different, different people being associated with this new board for various reasons.
Thank you.
I have a question from the Zoom, um, from Christie. Well. Um, I, I mean, it's not a question, it's hard for me to keep my mouth shut because the whole basketball thing all started because it was something that needed, I was told, the HOA board members need to have a meeting to replace the net. And they were talking about not replacing it. And my son plays basketball constantly. He's been away this summer, so have some of the other boys that play. It just so happens that that group of teenage boys happen to be black, and they're younger. And as much as I had to fight, I even shared a, a, a link to Amazon for two nets for ten dollars. Now, if somebody here replaces it, they're, they're risking climbing a ladder and falling and potentially suing the, the community. Um, I know that that happens sometimes. I mean, it's literally a five to ten dollar net. And it's not breaking because they're abusing it, they play constantly. No, no one is dunking, no one is hanging on it. We had somebody in the neighborhood volunteer to bring a freestanding net so that we could put one on the other side, so more people could play at each time. And the president said, it's too dangerous. Now, I don't understand how a freestanding basketball net is too dangerous to put on that court. And no one will power wash it. We're worried about putting flowers out front. How about the, the, the basketball court that's been repaved or retopped or whatever? And they can't even clean it off. These boys are slipping on stuff all the time when they're over there. It's just, it's such a petty thing, and it's something that is so simple that can be fixed. And this is what's happening. This petty stuff is being pushed down and people are volunteering help and they're just being dismissed and told no, 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 to literally everything. And it's gotta stop. Thank you for your comments. Um, I think we had someone in the back that.
Okay.
What?
Um, I just need to address the basketball.
Yeah, I was gonna say, Eric, Eric is an expert, so he can address that.
My name is Eric. So my name is Eric Peterson, okay? And the board didn't come to me, okay? So in my past life, I was a college basketball official, okay? And the question came to me is, what about this net, okay? And in normal play, when you have a, a net, in normal play, where the ball is just passing through the net, that is going to last for a season, okay? And I, I don't know what's happened in this situation, but for, for two cloth nets and multiple metal nets don't be used with the level of play that we have here, there's something besides normal wear and tear going on, okay? And when the board came to me, they said, what do you think, Eric? And I said, you know what? I said, we have, we're trying to keep Chris occupied with doing other things other than these types of tasks. And a couple of thoughts came to mind. Thought number one is Chris has better things to do. Do the players need to have a net? No, that, that net is there to hold the ball well, so nobody gets hurt in the knee.
Right.
Okay, that's its only function, okay? When you put a metal net up and the kids hang on it or they do something, they can get cut, okay?
We are not hanging on the net.
Oh, Laura, I can't believe you, Josh. I can't believe you. All, all I'm saying is kids will be kids, kids will be kids. Even if it's given any different type, I just guarantee you, if you're always going to play basketball, they are going to, they are going to hit that net somehow. I will take responsibility for giving the board, that recommendation to say, please don't put the nets up until we can come to a better solution. But Chris has better things to do this season than keep replacing those nets.
These are teenage boys, what else do you want them to do in this neighborhood that is safe? Christie, I didn't get your response. Right, I, you know, I'm sorry, I'm trying so hard to be calm about this, but I, I mean, and again, I, you know, I I feel like if these were, hmm, I don't wanna make this a race thing, and, and I'm white, you know, my kids are biracial. I, I, I just think for teenage boys, there's not a lot of stuff to do, right? What do you want them doing in this neighborhood that is healthy, that is safe, to keep them out of the streets? To keep them active, to keep them from getting into anything that is not safe or not healthy? What do you want them doing in this neighborhood? And these kids live for basketball, and one of the kids in the neighborhood has a college scholarship because they play constantly, constantly. Okay, thank you, Christie.
I'm gonna say something. Um, I just want to say something real quick. The bottom line with the basketball, we did consult an expert. The bottom line is the health and safety of these children. We will figure out a way, he's made some suggestions, we're looking into those.
Okay.
And safer for all children. Man, your children may not be hanging on the net, but there are children hanging on the net, and we don't want anybody getting hurt.
Okay, so if the safety is not, if the safety is a huge concern, then why haven't they fixed the fence? No one has fixed the fence that has been curled up, they throw a board on there all the day. And that is a pet shot waiting to happen. So it is not about the safety, it's not. It's petty. Hmm, 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 hmm.
We did meet with a group of people, Jeres, Christine, Laura, your husband, and a word of acknowledgement to communicate, to talk. It was not, I commenced to the meeting and every campus was attacked in some way, shape, or form. We, Madonna and I were all of a sudden tainted. We, it was all horrible. Yes, we had for two and a half hours. And we had, we were nothing but attacked. We were doing it wrong, a lot of lies, a lot of misinformation. Um, so we didn't try to leave, but it was all the attack on the board. Stop that offer.
When, when did it go back to being prepared in two months? We have a chance, everyone, once I, you all, we, we were reading one month. When did it go to, we never did one month?
No, we did a lot, a lot of time with us. I've been on the board twenty-three years, we've been twenty-three, and they always come in every other month. But then Jay and I, at the beginning, was a, they had a friend, she's still fighting with her daughter. But then they mentioned me once a month, but that one.
Okay, okay.
All right, my whole thing is about, what's your name about? My name is Kenneth, thank you. Florida Autumn Sports, Christine Elwill, doing it all. My only thing is, is about those basketball nets. I put white, black, and purple. The kids need something to do. Every kid doesn't play pickleball. If you all need me to donate some nets or they could be put up, I can put them up. I can donate, I can put them up so they can play. Because everyone doesn't want to play pickleball. And it's unfair to have a, a pickleball court and you have a basketball court, but these kids cannot go.
They can still play.
They can play.
No, what I'm saying is, they need a net.
A five dollar net.
Yeah, they still can play, but most kids, it's not gonna play without a net. They just don't want to see the ball go through. They want to see the net, they want to see the net switch back and forth. I'm not saying they support anything, but on the basketball, that's wrong. But if they want to play in that, we should be able to give them a net.
Okay, that's why we're arranging to go here, we're arranging to the speaker.
All right, six minutes, you're on your turn. Okay, so you said you're gonna have a lot of fun this, because of this basketball.
Well, I've been involved with that, thanks for that, thanks.
Exactly. Okay, so my thing with this whole situation is that this started long before the basketball.
Yeah, it did.
There were a few people that did not like, when the board was doing things, we raided the board, called them all kinds of names, one of them resigned immediately because they didn't like what was going on. Now, I'll admit, I've run with the board, I lived here thirty years, and I think they do a lot of that. I'm also for them, because it's just like what they said, they do a lot of that, it's a job I don't want to do, they can ask me. I said, don't thank you, I know the time, and that's what they said, no, it's work. Now, I think that months ago, when this, I'll say it's a person, came through and started doing all this stuff, I don't understand what, what needed to be done in the way he did, he attacked. Now, I know all this will create, they need to change, maybe some of theirs weren't done right, but um, I think this board is open, I mean, I don't know these people, but they know they're smart people. I think they're open to listening to people. They may not agree with everything, but they'll listen. And if all these people, they, that your meeting are all going about starting these meetings and working on them, how did you start working with the board, like they want to work on the other side, what did you hear? And this bullshit with this, it's got to stop. And I don't understand, after these meetings, when you had, say, the board voted, that's the next step, and they don't decide, do you just expect that your team is gonna come in and take over and come up with, win? And come up with, win, win, this task stuck. Because all I heard in your YouTube was threats about the lakes, what you're gonna do. And I don't remember that, but I think the bottom list that I thought, well, if you wanna go through all that proof, points about whatever was done now or in the past, it goes, what a funny. And just your cats and all the little net stuff that you think they done, it's past that. And I, you know, when this was started, everybody will start, what are you doing this floor? Okay, all right, this can stop today. The intention is that we come together, and that's the purpose of this meeting tonight, with all of you, as we, the whole membership, the whole ownership, all of you. The attacks did start by particular persons because he was on the board, and then it starts.
It was not on board.
So we're ladies and gentlemen tonight, right? We're coming together, right?
Yes.
Okay, so let me talk and then we'll, whatever. Laura and I have had conversations, she and I have had conversations that yes, there are problems. And she's known that there's been problems for a couple of years and she's told me that on the twenty-sixth. Remember our conversation?
Okay.
That, so we both know that there's been problems for a couple of years. And we've all talked about the year of staff. Well, but I mean, the board has a mood, like I'm just, I'm just giving you some background. So Laura and I are both on the same page, we know there's problems and we're trying to get this resolved.
And we know this don't work.
Okay.
Well, I'm on trial today, gives them a good interest for three years.
I'm right.
Correct.
Okay, and they've been, some of them, how many of them?
Twenty, twenty-seven. We can, we can.
For sure, it's not, it's not.
Well, all I wanna say is they're, they have a three-year term, correct? Yes. And they, a lot of them have been there twenty years.
Yeah.
And a lot of people have been here for twenty years. So if there's not room for any changes.
You know, I'm thankful, and you know, I'm, I'm thankful that they stepped up. Because there's not, there's not people that run for the board.
Okay, we're gonna go to, um, first one.
So get your mouth shut.
Okay, let's wait, let's, let's wait nine, let's, okay. Yes, okay, we're gonna bring the temperature in the room down. We're gonna bring the temperature in the room down, we're gonna take a question from Zoom right now.
Okay, so there is kept saying that everything was in the indentures. What if the indentures, you're lucky, for either a three-year term or a two-year term, depending on if you're a lack of ALC or what you want. That's why we always have to see people running each year. It's nowhere does it say, you started three years and you get off. Nowhere does it say, you can only be on for three years, or you can only do these policies once and get off. Because Jay was our very, very first customer and he was off once or twice for a year or so at times, but Jay spent four years off the board. So, one year. Okay, so the deal is usually they have a primary replacement and you decide you don't have to run. People are not coming out of the walls, so people are not on the roof anymore, so. So it's, it's not saying that just clarify on the year.
Okay.
And I just, and so you understand now, the indenture only say that it's your three-year term or two-year term. There is nothing about when you have to get off the board.
People stop the same thing, right?
What you said is your turn then.
I'm gonna make a scene, you're just being silent, the first one.
Chris, Chris, can you unmute?
Hello, hello. Hi, Bobby. I was in the car up here, I went there and we were talking about, uh, how often. And right now, we're every other month, okay?
Chris, can you start over, we're getting your dogs barking.
Yeah, about that. He stopped going giving out, anyway. Um, we, we were talking earlier about how the, the monthly, the meetings are held every other month.
Yes.
But right now, I mean, we're not in a normal situation. Um, there are a lot of issues back and forth and whatnot, right? And they need to be worked on. So if there is a group of people that wants to eat, which at least the part of the board, to start prioritizing and, you know, educating each other of what can be done and what can't be done, um, then maybe it should be helped, I mean, for a while, I mean, until things start calming down. So that, that's, that's my point. The other, um, and I apologize if this was addressed earlier I couldn't join until about twenty minutes ago, so. Um, this is a question for S M G. For S M G, okay, um.
S M G is not here tonight.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, okay, well, here's the deal, so when you put in a work order, um, you know, you get a response that it's been received, but then it gets closed.
Well, S M G is not here tonight, Chris, so we can't address your work order question.
Yeah, please, yeah, just take a, a note, um, I'm sure I'm not the only one. The field is way, I feel like they should stay open until they're completed. So last spring, I had a work order in to replace at least one or two trees because I lost three of them.
Yes, so Chris, S M G is not here tonight, so we cannot address your work order issue.
Well, you can take notes, right?
Her initial question was about having the meetings, um, every other month and that in the past, there used to be more meetings.
And there wasn't. Not in twenty-five years, twenty years. Is there a question about what I talked about for the meeting? The meetings being held, how often and whatnot?
No, that hasn't been for about twenty years.
No, okay, okay, but we're, I think you gotta admit, we're in a very difficult time right now. And there are a lot of people that don't know what to believe. So maybe, I'm just saying, maybe meetings being held every month for a while. And so it's gonna be prioritized and, you know, find out what we can do and what we can't do and then start working it. Uh, that, that's just my comment here. But if you would please take a note.
Yes.
No, I, when I'm not getting things done, even when I put in work orders and even after I talk to members of the board, so I don't know what's going on with that. But I do feel like that work order is gonna be open, that work order is gonna be open until.
It's not, um, that's why. Anyway, what I have a lot of questions, I think, like, assumes everybody else knows what's going on. I just listened with the last night, the main link is contaminated, I wanna know if that actually a decision.
Let me answer that for you. We have a professional company called Salute. Their company is licensed to, as a society applicator. All their technicians are certified in Aquatic Public Health, Forest Street, right away. Turf, water, and water has required by six. All the products they use are registered with the EPA. All, all products they use for us are registered with the EPA. They do, buy, we buy monthly maintenance, they test the water, they apply what is needed. The main lake fountain, yes, it is out for repair, but have no fear, it's still there, where it is in there. There are blockers under the water, you cannot see, that is there already in that lake. So it's not a problem.
I have a couple of questions, one, is, has anybody been addressing, we are over three pairs. As far as roofing, siding, top point, the last meeting, uh, Blue Sky was sending comments, or taking stuff from other blockers. I mean, I don't know how many blockers we picked up in the last two years, but nothing's happening. Our places are falling apart. The roofs are leaking, the siding is disintegrating, it's turned and empowered. Just if you touch it, you can't touch it, because you'll wrap the paint, I mean, we're desperate, we need repairs, so where are we going back? For those three major issues, who imagine, wall, guttering, roofing, siding, and top point.
I haven't heard that most guy is gonna out yet. They've been promised that they're coming. We have been told for quite a while that different roofing company have done a study and we were just kept trying to get a copy of it. Apparently, they didn't really do a study, so we were misled, talking months on that. They're not gonna study on siding.
No.
No. The, um, the siding, we have siding that some of the blockers and a lot of the the tram work that's, um, brought in, that was reported, I think it's a law, so we had a book in here that had pages on each building and each unit with pictures of all siding damage and some of the work that needed to be done. And the board went through and prior work, I was it, was what we thought Chris could do, that there was a minimum number repairs on that building or, and they were going to run it because we're not, we can buy itself a lot of that at some place. So we prioritizing ones that we have to go to a siding company or a bit, um, bid. I, I know they sent it to the company that did the walk around and provided all the pictures. I'm not sure how many other companies actually got sent to bid on it. But we have, everyone back within this. We have one bid on top point, it was for thirty-four thousand dollars for five buildings. We have fifty-two buildings that need like top point. Sure, it was thirty-four thousand dollars.
For real?
Not five, not five facilities. But those little trim brick walls at your entrances, a lot of those need work. So we've been trying to get another bid on top point. Because since then, we have completed our walk around and we have a lot more buildings, a lot more work that needs to be done. We can't get a bid. The roofs.
Lockers, blockers.
The roofing roofing that's right down the street, or the mail company that's right down the street. Who tried the panel roofing or the John Bill that's right down the street?
S M G's got the companies that they use. Or, and we have specific ones, we'd ask them to include it out and they've done that in some cases. I don't know.
I'll email tomorrow.
Yeah, so who's in, we had or who they were actually getting bids from. Well, no, they're getting, they're either getting no bids or they're just not getting any response. So either they're not interested in it or not. And this is, I mean, think about it, you hear it on the news every day. There's jobs that need to be filled, there's not enough waitresses, there's not enough, you're not doing anything. So siding companies and roofing companies are having the same problem. And they're crazy busy. And that's, I think that's why we have heard from one, from one company that actually did the study. He said really, he doesn't have time to even do a bid for us. The, um, roofing, that's why we haven't seen the report. But I think everybody's leaky roof has been repaired, that's considered a priority. So that one happens as quickly as we can get some money there to do it, if it's leaky. Um, but most of the roofs are only about twelve years old. I think there were two or three buildings that were not replaced after the tornado and following the windstorm the next year. But apparently they weren't really well done because we have, I think it was eighteen rooflets the past winter that we had sent. It wasn't towards the center. So apparently the roofs are gonna wear out a lot faster than we planned because those are supposed to be twenty or roof second. So these are happening and we're having a lot of trouble finding somebody to come to the board to fix them. The one thing, all this discussion about why did we get dry points, why are we getting sealed, why did the trees get cut? These are things that we could actually get bids for, it was work that needed to be done. We can really get a couple of bids for them, so we could have somebody to do that for us. Those, those jobs were all in the budget, are in reserves. So the money was planned, it's set on that.
Still, I think the driveway is still, all that, which they need to rebuild, I'm saying. Why not keep that one that we had in reserves for the, the top point?
We have, we have a lot of roofs and siding in the reserves. So the money is there to do repairs, it's not there to re-site every building in one year or two. It's not there to re-roof every building in a couple years. Because in theory, we have a few more years to be building up some of those projects too.
And one more question. If I was to call my flat roof or John Bill.
I've already got an email starting to go, to save the bits.
So this is what's going on, it's not and, and it does not say anywhere in the indentures that we need to have guys go on everything. We've seen the budget, we've seen what we're gonna spend, we're attempting to repair, but it's to be repaired. And that's not what we're doing.
Well, I think we're in a moment, that what's a priority for some person around here is not a priority for others.
Well, and I love, I love the state right under all of the.
I just worry about those themselves because what could be the smaller problem now? Because they're on there and it's more costly to fix that time post.
Yes.
So for those of you that don't, this is Eric Peterson. So what I heard tonight, I heard it multiple times, is that there's major problems that need to be corrected. Okay, it must require bids and bids require time and they require expertise. And it's not something to be done by amateurs, it's not even something necessarily needs to be done by the board because they're not always qualified with the level of detail that needs to be made with this. It needs to be done by a professional, so. I also heard tonight from Jerus that S M G needs to be maybe looked at. Okay, and I think we're all agreeing on it, so, so what I would like to do is see if we could come together and give some sort of context for this because right now, we are sitting in a mid office. We have roughly September, October, November, and December, well, December, nothing gets done, December because it's the holidays, that's Thanksgiving, nothing can be done, so. What's a realistic timeline to even consider replacing the management company? In many cases, you have to give notice and many times, it's ninety days, so. And this is a question for either Jerus or the board. What is, what sort of notice has to be given to S M G determining contracts? Or is it an auto renew, do we know?
It's an auto renew with a, I don't know that we have to tell them. When is the. I'm sorry.
It's an auto renew contract. It's an auto renew contract. And we have sixty day window for renews that we have to tell if we're gonna renew or not.
Okay, so so now we have some facts, right? We know that we have to give a sixty days notice. So the question is can any group put together committees or anything that realistically look at something in that short window between November first and January first that will make a smart decision? Yes. I I I I'm just throwing out there because I'm also challenging saying it would be very difficult. So now that you said that, at the same time, let me finish, please, let me finish. And at the same time, we have all this good work being done for all these major projects. Okay, so I'm just throwing out there to see. And and I'm just gonna let everybody else have their say, but my concern is just that very short window of time.
We can do that, Eric, we can do that, we've already talked about.
We already have a committee working on that, so they've been diligently working on that, so.
Can I get a timeout so everybody can know what's going on and to put that out there? Because it's important to understand that's
Okay, I have a question.
Oh, can I?
No. One of the things. What is the procedure for paying our bills? Like who actually signs the check?
On top computer, Texas.
That's what's wrong. Before with AMC, I sign the checks, you sign the checks, or Shaw sign the checks, but Keith also sign the checks. We look at the invoices person physically. We don't, we don't talk. We look at the invoices and we said, okay, this needs nothing, I wouldn't question it. We just did this and things like that. There's no way to question that with SMG, we're in tests.
There is.
No, there isn't. Anyhow, I sign the check, he signed the check, he checked, he signed the checks, I signed the checks. We had a check verification procedure and that's how the bills got paid. Now we don't know if SMG has even signed the checks. Because these contractors, the reason they're not bidding on things is because they won't do business with SMG. I have talked to the contractor. All the way over Stone will not bid because lots of these contractors know SMG. They know that it's been slow paid or no. They get four months, six months slow paid. They don't wanna do business with somebody like that. And there's been seven turnovers with SMG, seven managers in two years that they lose invoice and people don't get paid at all. They don't want to bid on that job. That's why we can't get bids because of why aren't we getting bids? That's one of the reasons. Nobody in their staying mind wanna do business with SMG when they're doing all the signing of the checks, which they're not. I signed it, you signed it, Keith signed it, physically signed it. Had a checkbook right there.
Jay, we get a process for that.
What?
There's a process for that.
What what is the process?
What's that?
Yeah, because of that.
Okay, so the first the first time we talked to each of the management companies when we were looking at them, we told them we need to see the invoices, we need to see them before they get paid. AMC was pretty good, but every once in a while they got the wrong GL bucket. Or you know, or something that that they shouldn't have done. But they weren't used to us, they knew about the two accounts and the two associations and what things went out, which one. And we were pretty sure of it. Nobody knew, so we get that at the beginning and we were right. But they all assured they both assured us that we wouldn't need to do that. So instead one of us got to go over the holiday invoices after they got paid and saw us screwed up in the reports. So the reports have ended and cleaned up, but it takes time. Finally, in the last of this year, they agreed. So now Sean and I can, there's an online process, okay? There's an application that I go there's an application that I go up the invoices then into. And they do their accounting things to figure out where it's GL that they have to go into. And then it winds up in my team and Shaw's team, so we can go through a general review, check my back up. And I go through and look at what or did they split? Cause some of ours had to be split between the two companies. Split like one when when it's well, all the lawn care services. It's split and it's still about six or seven of them GL accounts and two different associations. So it's a little tedious. So now I can go through and see what they've done and correct them. And they're still getting things, the problem with buying one exit once you start a month. Um is they don't know which one of those in the way.
That's what I'm saying, the whole problem goes back to SMG. SMG is the
The point is we not been looking at it before, so the workers
And what do you call the word you're at, guys?
Hold on, we got two, we got some questions out of the thing.
Okay, so we're gonna take two, three more questions and they were gonna move forward on our agenda because I'd like to get to how to move forward. So get that swirling in the back of your mind and we're gonna start here. Here and there's one other question for that there and we're gonna draw because I'd like to open the discussion on how do we move forward? What does that look like as an AL community here?
It's all good, I mean, I have two commonest questions. First of all, you said there was me that's looking at replacing SMG, did I hear that correctly? Okay, who was a part of that committee? Your part of that.
Who else?
Who else?
I'm gonna be honest, we've got a couple owners that were waiting, but at this point at this point, we're we're making initial contact and to see if the companies will deal with us, if they have an interest in replacing the signs. And the focus that we actually started is to be in a couple of the um owners like in the next week or so. And I think I'll talk to some people.
Yeah, she talked to my husband and she's talking about that. And I think the, this is more on time, I think we all agree, or the majority of us agree, that SMG needs to be replaced.
Yes.
Just know that, we can, we can do this. I think we don't have, we don't have so much confrontation. The other thing that I wanna say is when we got the letter stating that AMC was being replaced and SMG was coming in as our new management company, we were told there was a one year contract. So at what point did that change? Where now it's an all renewal.
And that's it was an all renewal contract, but we could get all the this year. The the problem was the financial agreements were really screwed up. I mean, it took us two to live to get the summer funding to close. We couldn't add in the first year, many, many of the account owners accounts were screwed up. And I
And then
Let me finish.
And because those were so screwed up, we couldn't just pick them up and put them in somebody else's system without all this screen, all the information behind it. We were never gonna get fixed. But we've been working very hard trying to get all that stuff we got to work actually find a new position where we could move. And then funny thing, we have some other stuff that took up hours and hours and hours and days for the last year. So that we really couldn't focus on some of those other things that we needed to be doing.
So I see, so I really need to expedite this to give
The other thing, the other thirteen years ago, sixteen years ago. What I'm talking about is all this extension, the Facebook posts, all this other stuff that's been going on. We have, we get calls, we get questions, we have a deal that we have to figure out what they're talking about. It takes a lot of time.
My thing was since we have sixty day on, we're gonna how all of us wanna back to AMC for at least
No, no matter, no matter.
We're all being going back to AMC.
Oh yeah, so
We have been a lot, they've been having a long issue for the last two years.
We don't think we have many of them. It's our thing. We have sixty day, we're not trying to be able to get any more in June within sixty days.
Not gonna deal with all this stuff. If you would just shut down for a while, we could get some off the
What are, what are you, what are you talking about? Why shut them down?
All the extension, the labor, the laboring. Getting these fixed off.
Hi, my name is Sasha Girls, welcome to our special. Um so I my question is related to special assessment piece. When I was buying into here, it was my understanding that it's only been one major special assessment be done. Is that correct?
There's only been one in forty two years and it was only five hundred seventy six dollars per unit.
Yes, thank you. That was very attractive to me when I was buying and getting here. Uh so since it was only ever occurred once, I would like to ask what is the procedure behind how do you special assessment be done? Such as timelines, um communication to the residents about like the purpose of occurring? And what is the process of a special assessment figure? Such as are dues? Are ratio based on our square footage? Are special assessments also tiered based on square footage? Or are they applied evenly across units?
I think all of that would depend on what it was that we needed to do. The only special assessment we had done is stretch away. And what we we did, we had some reserves, but when we got our first three bids, they were fifteen hundred, fifteen hundred eighty thousand dollars. We didn't have that many reserves. So then AMC already took a loan. And then we figured out what we needed to make, you know, to pay off the loan. And we came up with the five hundred seventy six dollars per unit.
Five hundred dollars a month.
And and to make it as easy as possible, we we gave the options to do twelve dollars a month for four years. And some people decided they didn't wanna mess with that, they just wanted to pay it off. And we felt that that was preferable to increasing your fees by twelve dollars and then you would never, because the fees never went down, right? So this way, when you paid off your your last twelve dollars, your fees dropped. And then we, so we maintained that salary. So it would just really depend, and then we did, and then talking at a meeting, we were gonna do this whatever for a month, so we were gonna need the grudging, we're gonna have to get up bids for the grudging, okay, we're gonna look at stuff for the grudging. And so we talked about it for a lot. And then um then the board has went and figured out what the numbers are and how it makes sense.
So like the four major factors that I mentioned earlier. Well, I know I'm not asking anybody to commit to anything. But what is the likelihood that in the next year or one or three years that we may need a special assessment fee?
At this point, we have not this is why I'm so confused, why is so much discussion? Cause we haven't talked about a special assessment.
Right, I was in every meeting that we have had and
And the board hasn't had any discussion about special assessment.
So the board's position right now is that I speak for major
At least at least a week, we have budgets finished, um to do the work, at least three months at a time, people can do it. And and that's why
And if something is being, you guys would be providing an opportunity as you did in the past to have people, but we would not have to individually find it as well. Like there would be some people providing
Well, yes, hopefully, hopefully, again, that would depend. If we came up, but whatever it was, was gonna be, we had to do it all at once at one time. We might as well sell a thousand dollars. And even if the money ran around, we might have to get a loan for it. But that's why it still depends on what the project would be, the cost of the project, how fast it would have to be paid off. And all that kind of stuff.
Right, so if there is a likely put up, they have, you're saying the intention is that in the past, the board tries to find that obviously to offer to residents the option of paying additional work period of time. But if that is not available, you're saying it would not occur right away, people would have time and notice to be able to arrange that.
As much when we know it and we then you will find out, I mean, we, there's nothing wrong with it at this point that we see doing that.
Hi, Laura Fisher, one of the nine, one of the five, five, and I think your, I just seen that and her daughter have been here thirty two years. Um so I just wanna ask a question. I know too many of you and the research that Jareds and others have done may sound little and petty and small things focusing on the bylaws, focusing on other things. But it is part, in my opinion, it is part of a whole. It is a an issue that is systemic, it's an issue that um needs to be addressed. It is not meant that it's a distraction, but more to let you know that things are not right. So that's my comment. I know people will think we're little things and I just want you to know that the research has been done, has been done and with faith to bring things to the homeowners because there have been a lot of things that just frankly don't add up. Um as it relates, and I am talking, I'm being specific, we got Eric Peterson here. But as it relates to Smith Management Group, whether it was done rightly or wrongly, a petition was done last year, many of you signed it. More than fifty percent of the homeowners signed a petition to ask the board to not renew Smith Management and to have a committee of people who would do in the right way an RFP to put a prime on a new property management company. And that could have been done in, since that was at the end of June, July. Um that would give them six months to have done it. Smith would have gone after its first year. Laura has said that it was difficult to do because of the state of the financials, but we all know independent owners and others who come in and look at that, things can be done when they're ready, can't. So I'm not sure that that was a reason, but I want you to know that even though now we have a shorter window, there have been many opportunities. And this was one, that would have been six months, but this could have been done last year. Now we're down to four months, you know, this year. So it is an issue, it is not because of the distraction of things going on. Because those things need to come to your attention and you need to see that as well to get the whole picture. So I think there just are a number of things that do need attention, they do need to feel. Um I don't know the answers on that, but I want to say that many professionals who deal with team building, who deal with communications, who deal with many other things that have been problematic in auto lakes. Those individuals have stepped forward and offered to the board, not to the community at large. They have offered to the board their professional services for free. And they have been, if not outright rejected, um methods have happened because of those. So to the gentleman who said, why not take concerns to the board, why not offer to do things and get involved? I want you to know, I've seen a good number of professionals who have offered their services to help with this. So okay, uh I hope you don't mind if I said this, but Michelle Bruce is a communications professional and and she has offered to help with communications. Um there are, and you know, others know who's helping with that. Um Santa Venko is a professional project manager. He was director of research for the American. Um and he has offered um his help to do that. Um we have people who have offered for team building when it seems that there was some dysfunction on the board or in the board members. It's always good to have people who can help the team move forward. So professional team building was offered. So I just want you to know that wasn't, I just want to let you know it's there. So please save the word for us. You kind of not naming off the top of my head at this people. Here's my question to that. Is right. Is there a problem with that? What is the problem?
Okay, with your question, with your question.
Okay, so sorry if you were having a question, but I have a statement, but I just, you know, I am free. Um I hope that was sufficient to let you know there are professionals who would step forward. And please someone who was at the communications forum, you know, there were professionals who stepped forward there too. So if you can remember any names, you can provide this this lady and these individuals here. Okay, here's my question. How much should we pay Smith Management Group in total for twenty twenty two? Their fees in all their forms and how how does that compare to twenty twenty three year to date? And then for comparison, how much should we pay AMC in twenty twenty one? So my question is around the costs that we are spending for Smith Management Group, which does not seem to be a popular property management company. So how much should we spend to pay them in total? Their professional fee plus the individual things that they get paid for. Um not the work being done, but things that they get paid for, things that go with Smith Management's profit. Um so what should we pay them in twenty twenty two? How does that compare to twenty twenty three year to date? And how does that compare to AMC twenty twenty one? You can figure in inflation. I've heard someone say that. We can figure that in, you know, for comparison. Comparison doesn't have to be exact, but at least in the same ballpark, are we playing baseball or football? Um so it would just be good to know those figures. Thank you.
Uh we all have more in twenty three.
You're right.
Yes.
Yes, so this is all.
So. The um. So I want to say just one thing is actually the only person I remember offering direct support was Laura Fisher. And she saw her wife's house with a lot of keys. Those others were maybe at a communication forum, but I wasn't there. The other kind of knows, but again, I don't know. Um. Um the one thing that we didn't actually get to talk about is the dumb kind of random questions. So many, many, many of the things that Jared has mentioned, priorities through the five oh three C and the church hall slash social organization. So the board actually met with the attorney this week because we had questions. Because we weren't aware of any capabilities or ob- ob- you know, obligations or possibilities for grants and things like that. And it's like, why don't we know about this stuff or these various financial reporting things that you just kept referring to? But it turns out that first, five oh one C three, well first, there is no five oh three C.
Yes, sir.
It was a five oh one C three. And this a federal department of revenue tax exempt classification for churches and charitable charitable organizations and other charity organizations. So the five oh, five oh one C three. Autumn Lakes Association and Autumn Lakes Congress Association are actually nonprofit corporations. Each all these way corporations in Missouri are nonprofit corporations through the state of Missouri Department, Secretary of State and the Department of Labor. We are not tax exempting.
We're not a five oh one C three.
We are not a five oh one C three.
All homeowners associations are.
No, they're all not.
They're all not.
They're all not nonprofit, registered with the Secretary of State.
But we follow the Missouri County Living Act, which is a homeowners association.
My understanding is that only the tax companies that we all have our.
Um I'll I'll send I'll send you the code.
So.
I agree.
You agree with me.
I agree with you all.
Okay, so.
We're a non-profit corporation.
We are a non-profit corporation. We are a.
As a homeowners association, which also under the tax code, which we only pay a hundred a hundred dollars a year in taxes.
No.
Yeah, that's what it's we pay a hundred dollars.
Well, yes, but that's that's based on federal partners or and he was some degree class money.
Yes, I'll I'll send you the tax.
Well, per BHOA lawyer, we are not a five oh one C three.
So we are not getting grants. We are not.
We can't give out credit to any charitable.
And it also excludes many of the the financial things that Jared was talking about. And I suggest that all of you read the inventors because ninety percent of the stuff that you said isn't in there.
Yes, it is.
No, it's not.
Did you say it's not in there?
And trust me, I have read those adventures for twenty three years.
Too long, too long.
Well, well, I don't I don't.
If I was younger, I would.
Yeah.
I would say that we should need to look at the inventors for yourself. There is no term limits. There is not the best because we have to run a danger expensive past you. The reason we are here is to take care of this stuff and do the best that we can do for the rest of us. And you will let us to do that.
So can I just say one thing? You just heard say the bid for five buildings on Top Twenty was thirty five thousand dollars. If we ran anything over twenty five thousand by, which is general maintenance, driveways, snow plowing, that's all general maintenance. That's all in the inventors. If we ran every single bid by you guys and had to send out a letter, hold the vote, the whole nine yards. That all takes time, correct?
And we wouldn't need a board.
Then we wouldn't need a board.
We would have to handle and the business.
I don't think so.
What I'm saying is then we have to wait for the bids. So it's already taking long enough to get stuff done. Think of how much longer it would take.
But think how much happier the homeowners would be if.
No, we'd definitely.
If they were reached.
Wait, wait, wait.
That's for.
Yes, that's what I mean, because they'll do that, but when it does come, it looks like everything's going wrong and it does go back in.
It's management group.
Then there's.
But it's the property management company.
And give that on one call.
Yes.
And this and this is my notion now that that we did not live here through AMC. Trust me, these buildings didn't happen in this condition because of S M P. They were in this condition prior to S M P.
Because she wasn't spending that money, but I don't.
No, we were paying over rotten site.
I don't think she was.
Not us, AMC.
I just want to know she had said she didn't do the.
Oh, go ahead, girl.
Is it possible to just increase the the number of people on board so it would be one, two, seven, ten, eleven, twelve? Oh, okay, okay.
Yes.
All I wanted to say is imagine how much happier, okay, maybe everything doesn't come to you. You don't want to vote on that. But imagine how much happier the homeowners would have been in twenty twenty two and now if if the board had just given us the courtesy of saying, we're looking at property management companies. We're changing them. We're thinking about our options on that one. You like, what don't you like, what's important to you? Involve the homeowners. That would have been an easy thing to do. That's not their practice.
Yeah, they're willing to run the red light to AMC. I would have gone unless there would have been a need to go none of the.
Yeah.
We told you that there. Only thing we can do is move forward. Let's go bring it up to pass and just move forward.
Yeah, so I agree.
Oh, you got me. Oh, let me miss one more second.
Oh, one more.
Okay, one one thing I just wanted to, the attorney also suggested that anybody that's interested in learning more about the property management and the various problems and issues and insurance issues and the other stuff we've got on at us. C A I computer, I'm sorry, been on the computer for too long. Community Association Institute has a lot of classes. The board has been able to go to some free classes and training. And it's it was interesting, but it's very information, very informative. And some of them are free. Some of them you have to pay them all to install. They have webinars and stuff. So if you're interested, we can get you contacts on that. If you want to learn more about what's really involved in being a homeowner and compare this with these. Okay.
So now that brings us to the next item on our agenda and I'm looking.
Okay, all the answers are up here. We can do that all put together.
Okay.
Yes, thank you. So the next item on the agenda, how do we move forward? How do we move forward? Uh I'm looking for suggestions.
Well, moral question is a guess. So you said you're putting together a committee for research movement after companies? How many suggestions for management companies have you seen?
Free.
Uh I thought we had more on our culture sets. We heard really good things about a few along with top artists that we have worked with about.
I have some. I'm just curious to see.
There is no limit, so we're looking for email. So we're gonna start.
Unless you're.
Do you have a name?
Okay, thanks.
I have a follow up question to that. Previously, we were told that the board was only accepting suggestions. So you manage a company, if you had spoken with a board member of the other association.
No.
Are we changing that?
No, what we said, if you talked to a friend that was happy, but we need to, trust me, if a board member contacts because there's a lot of stuff the board deals with that the homeowners don't know about.
Correct, but we may not have contact information or, or so can we suggest a management company even if we do not have contact information?
You can't, you can't suggest that we will need to know the man, the.
But you know, the AR did. They went out and made a couple of, I mean, you know.
I can go past it. Then you can start telling this.
I know it's not what it's meant.
She asked.
It's not using management company is not to manage this work.
Oh, I think. Here, we got one. You hold it. Hold that.
Uh I guess my comment is moving forward. That was a question.
Yes.
I I I think that we've been talking about these this different boards and outside of things. I think that's one way. He mentioned about expanding the board and whether testing all that type of stuff. If if the board members would welcome other people as committee type members to look at the different issues that we face, because it is a lot of work for a board. Anytime you get a lot of negative stuff, it stops positive stuff from taking place. It's not how it is these last two or three months. Oh, that's what it's been. And you don't have time to concentrate and think about things and show stuff that one person wants and nobody else wants. It's it it takes away from the real responsibility. So I really believe the solutions going forward is to get more people involved with certain issues in particular of contractors. I know that, well, uh in this day and time, it becomes more and more difficult to get them out there in time now. Okay, so what Laura was saying is true. You can call four or five, one make sure one may be on charge even if no workers there. So that takes a lot of time of finding contractors, okay? I really think we need to have two or three people that are reaching out to these contractors for ideas. They're pick up the phone, call these people, get some votes, have them come out, not necessarily certain board members all the time, you know? But create a committee or two where people have interest in it. I I think Jared says a lot of knowledge that we need. Well, I'm just saying, I I hear things and I I just believe that we can fix this. If all of us bring our expertise together, I mean, and really give back to our community. Um yeah, it it takes a little work, but I just think you make the first step by communicating with each other. And then the board members know that you're interested in something, whatever it may be, siding or roach or I don't know, you know, what your interest would be, but I think that's where it starts. I think you have some great ideas, Laura. I really do. I just think we need to bring them all together, right, and continue to work on, not just say something and then it goes away. I think we need to take some steps or everything, everything that we're talking about, do and put some steps together and make these things happen. I'm in, okay? I'm hoping everyone else that's here this evening is with the board, is trying to figure this out. And as we talk to each other, we can know some of our deals as fast as I somebody and maybe something will be done in the pop. Okay, I'm willing.
Maybe it will be.
Okay, there we go. Thank you.
We welcome any suggestions, any help. Please email the newborn email address so that we all get it. Autumn Lakes Board at gmail dot com. Sorry.
Hey, I have a question for you. I guess I thought you were going to give us a presentation on how we move forward. Wasn't that the question and answer there? Was I mistaken?
Yes, yes, but um I like the gentleman's uh comments. I'd like to know um just from this group, you know, who would be interested in, you know, possibly forming a focus group? You know, let us know what the top three priorities, you know, for you are and what's on your mind and how we can all collaborate and bring those things forward to the board because we don't know. And again, I've only been on board nine and a half minutes now, so.
I made it up to fifteen.
So um you know, so I'm green, you know, I'm new, I'm neutral. And um you know, this is a community that is wonderful. The people here are amazing and I love it here. And I have seen things change. I know the distinction, you know, that is within us. So how do we fix it? You know, where do we, how do we get to the point where we're being neighborly again? Yes, ma'am.
I just have a question. Are there plans to request that last order number so that we can get back up to five again?
Yes. Yes, email us and let us know if you're interested.
It's hard enough to find, so I'm sure you guys are struggling.
Yes, yes.
Well, I think we're all free that we need to run together. I heard a lot of the staff comments.
I heard one of the staff comments the other night before I went into the night, somebody said, do you think our board is okay with you?
We are going to be okay.
You know, that was the thing, I think, yeah, you know, I get so worried, there's so much upsetting information being passed around. Now, Laura, for you? I, oh, I, um, I, however I say it. I think there seems to be a shroud of secrecy of what goes on. Laura asked you a question. How much money, now, I figured you were not ready, you were not prepared to answer that question. But evidently you are. So, why does just an email have to go to Laura to tell us what those figures are, twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three?
Okay, if I put them on Times Square, will they ever get them?
Email. You can't email us.
How is that, or do you have, are you prepared?
Give the answer? Not off the top of my head, but I got the back of my head.
But I kind of felt that it just got pushed over to the side. That do involve in the shroud secrecy.
No, it's, it's not something you can look off and hack me.
Okay, and I did it today, you want to go up there and answer that question, but that's not, you know, how to I think you said the email goes to Laura, nobody else knows that. We all need to know, we face a lot.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to let everybody know, I'm sorry a lot of people laughed because I think that you noticed. You opened this up for me, I wasn't going to say a word to you, but you said you have the email. There were five board members. Mahabharan, Wayan Watan, Laura Curtis, Adonis Pizito, and Shawse. And we have probably when you're a board member to a lot of information, a lot of personal information. For all of you. Of, I mean a lot. And one board member took that information and shared with Jared, Laura, Christine, and some others. And that is email addresses.
Wow.
All those are on your address?
No, no.
No, no.
No.
No. As a matter of fact.
You know, you know.
I don't know.
You know, you know. You know, it's like, you didn't have to say.
Yeah.
No.
Yeah.
No. No, that's not true.
I have to have to say for last.
No, no, that's not true. I think.
Your email.
When, when Laura emailed, hold it, when Laura emailed the driveway information to everybody, she didn't block out everybody's emails. There's two hundred and forty emails on her email from the driveways and we have it. And I did not need, I did not use it, I.
Laura didn't email that, that was a slip, you know?
Okay, well, but it had to name on it, so. But I did not, I had nothing to do with that.
Okay.
Yes, but that was.
And I thought we were moving forward, I thought we were moving forward.
But, but we know just from all the financial information we got tomorrow.
No, I got off Times Square.
No.
Not the delinquencies.
I got, I got a lot of it off Times Square.
Not the delinquencies.
We didn't, we got your own.
That's a lot of numbers, I mean, not all numbers. Am I getting those?
The delinquencies and as the delinquencies as the total are on the books. And that is a total number, not no individual nor individual. So, we have none of that information, nor did we see it. We did not see that. I just want to say out, we do not have your personal information, we do not disseminate your personal information. We did not even see it.
I have an email.
I want you to know.
I didn't, I didn't.
I received an email with a Yahoo presentation on it. A Yahoo B two presentation and a lot of other information. I don't give my email to everybody.
No.
I don't want you, I don't want you, 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 anybody
I didn't.
to use my email address, to do not promote me on social media, I don't use social media. I'm ecstatic, but I don't know how to read emails.
She did ask you guys all the questions. Not to use my email anywhere, not to celebrate anything else.
So, I really want to know who sent that email.
I didn't know.
Who sent that email? Me that had the most email to do. That came from a, from a group, many, many years ago. Who said that?
I, I, I.
Who sent that? Who sent that? Because.
I'm sorry.
And what did you send? And who sent that?
I'm sorry.
So, there was an email, there was an email that was sent from the, from the vending and reconciliation group that had the YouTube, um, link on there and whatever. Who sent that email?
Mark did.
So, here, so just so you all know.
I did not, I, I didn't.
Just so you all know. He's apparently downloaded your personal identified on his Facebook story. God, that's really wrong.
It's the best problem there is.
I am, I want to know. There are people trying to outsource people.
They're human.
Trust us. Yeah, so we got that, we got all of our names, but all of our emails. I don't know what else he got. I have called into Smith Management at all yesterday morning asking them to talk about that they had a breach. Because that's what that is. I don't know whether he had access to you as a board member, but I think it's safe to say that if everyone started caution whatever he had access to, he still has. So, I don't know what that means for all of you who have your stamping cap, your running the drum, your tending cap, does he get that? You know, we have to draw a health. But does he know, did he get your comments? The personal management customer?
We think it's not management.
Okay, that's personal information. That's wrong. Cheryl, can you type that through email and reply all? Yes, that's what I did.
Well, then the common I email would offer because.
Because, because an email was sent from Smith Management Group from Smith Management Group was sent notifying condo owners that the asphalt was protected. And so essentially, if you see language, watch, get a reply all and attach his message.
So, how did he get the YouTube attached? Did that do what I did? Okay, I don't like do it, I don't like do it. But he did not have the right to do that. And so, so while you're trying, you're saying he does have it, because on your soc, on his social media he says he got it from Smith Management.
He didn't.
And he's, he's.
He said he did. We all get it, we all get it. Well, I did, because I'm a homeowner, but. But we all get it. If you look at the email that came from Smith Management.
I'm not.
Everybody's email is, 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 is. Everybody.
Okay, but he said he downloaded that information, he downloaded.
You're lying.
No, it's never happened. They, they, two, got all their emails because it was sent from Smith Management. There are several people that have tested, sent me that they had to email the address because they were sent from Smith Management. I'm not saying that to get my foot off of the foot, I'm saying it because people here are verifying it or something, but they have used it.
They have used it, well, we don't know, I don't know that, but they're just saying how they got it. So, um, are there any other comments, questions, or anything, anything about us moving forward? Because I feel as if we're getting sidetracked.
So, so, Jen, today I thought, I thought that's a great email. The board is okay, but they presented their, their stuff. I thought the board was gonna go through and do kind of a, you know, but then are you happy that you?
It was, the main problem is that we are not five oh one C three, so most of that doesn't apply. Another one I have is just to deal with questions, any other questions that people had for us or.
Okay. Alright.
So, is there any desperate, you know, something I didn't talk about yet?
I think I have to email a lot. There's our board, one, one day for it. So.
Okay, okay. Any, yes, please, no privacy.
So, okay. Okay, so there's, you're pushing this, you guys are gonna have to.
Yes.
So, if there's, obviously there must be a lot of people in the community that are willing to help. I hope to see them come forward, but I think we're all in love with, from the board to take control of this and say, these are the major initiatives, the major things we need to address. And then buy that with people that are interested in this in home and get on the board and get on the goal. Okay, that is, that, and you have the stuff which is, I say, and, and. So, if, I think if your board can take and say, okay, these are our major initiatives, we need help and just look in there, but there's a lot of people, so give them sign up. Yeah, yeah, that, that. So, you can start again.
No, I'm ready, I'm ready. And y'all want to go first or? Okay, so, um.
Sure. Was my, what a couple of questions. Any questions you have anything to add?
I would just suggest that you use this new email address, the Gmail for Autumn Lakes Board, or Autumn Lakes Board. And that way all of us get it, so that people won't feel like one person got it and just blew it away. So, that means they'll need to cut all, you know, we can all talk about it and this stuff, so please, please get it.
And in addition to that, you know, AutumnLakesBoard@gmail.com, and in addition to that we'll have it posted, we'll, we'll have it posted and see us, approach us. Or at least me, you know, um, if you want my phone number, I don't care, text me. But other than that, see me, flag me down, say hi, if there's an issue, you know, approach any of us, you know, with anything because we're all here again for the same purpose.
So, um, I guess it's been about a month ago, we all had a moment. It was a group of us that met here as a communication forum. And I think that all that was documented and presented to the board. And then we kind of got on about a lot of this stuff, you know? So, I guess, I thought out of that forum, we had a lot of good conversation. A lot of the stuff we're talking about is better communication to the board, residents, vice versa, and with S M D. So, I think a lot of that stuff is not that we're all a little pressed, that we have issues with, you know, communication. So, I guess that communications forum was there, has the board reviewed it and even had a chance to consider any of this stuff? Because there are things in there, very simple things about how they restructure the, their board meeting, how maybe they get more accessible to people that couldn't maybe hear it and say, oh, and lots of things like that. Just little things that may go a long way, it won't not feel like we're being shrouding secrecy, even little notice.
John, Jonathan Roddick did a presentation for the board.
Okay.
And yes, there was greater information in there. And then there were three. And then there was all this other stuff, so we kind of have to spend a little time on that either.
But what I can say we did, we will have Zoom available for every meeting now. So that people that cannot get here will be able to get on and see the meetings and attend the meetings at it.
Just wanted to make sure that that wasn't dropped, I mean, that it's.
No, no.
Here, but it's, okay, looks like.
No, it wasn't dropped.
Okay, good.
We've actually had over fifty people online, so there is interest in our community, yeah. So, this was ju, this was great, yeah.
So, so in summary, we're gonna prioritize our duties, right?
Yes.
And then we're gonna find people to help address those, okay?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes, sir.
And we'll do all those conversations.
But there will be a board meeting every month, no?
The board will have to discuss that.
Every two months?
It's archaic every two months.
The procedure for the board meeting, which I have been to in thirty years, because I'm at home. So, I take care of my grass, they take care of my house, I do all this myself. So, I don't have any dependents, particular association. But in coming to this meeting, and I hope future meetings, that you present the budget at the beginning, review it in detail with whoever attends, so that we all know where we stand as far as money is concerned, because that's my biggest question.
She gives her a short answer.
We're all very small, we're all reserved, god. Supposedly, we have little reserves, we have little money, so on and so forth, and it's, it's about a special assessment. Well, that's what I see with you. You may not, but I, and that's obvious. And once you present that, you know, people begin to understand where that money is going and where it's coming. And maybe you'll leave it. Maybe thirty percent of these problems.
At the beginning of every meeting, it's given that.
Okay, he, he just want to do that, but AMC, he calls my question, how much is in the budget?
It's just, it's the speaker's answer.
Okay, we're just gonna, we're gonna call our L G T A chairs.
Pardon? I'm in charge of the meeting.
We're gonna move our most.
No, I, I, my wife and I want to move them. Um, she. And does anybody have any complaints about my home? My driveway, my lawn. Don't send the police. Oh, thank you. Do not send the police. Come and talk to me for my lawn. And we will pray about the neighbors, yeah? And we will pray about the kids. Yes, I had the police come to my home about my garage. And I asked my family about my garage. Excuse me, the police came about my car being parked in the wrong direction. Yeah. That's absolutely right. So, we are, we are saving motion for the meeting, all right, so.
Action. Say.
Alright, we're all adjourned.